Yeah, I don't like to go in a house where it's so low.
Yeah, we looked at one out here, the whole house was stove and I, we got back down to kitchen, I looked at Kristen and I said, Mr. Single.
Yeah, I got, you can't get on the walls.
Yeah, I sound like I'm grounded everybody, I'm really not.
I say it's a curve.
And then later in the day it gets, the worse it gets. And people were on a four o'clock meeting, and I know they thought I was just snapping everybody. I was like, I'm really not, I'm just trying to say what I have to say.
Oh, I remember, I know we got.
Good.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, we. I kid you not. So you know the award is screwed up, they still haven't fixed this problem, they put all the accounts and put all the business accounts in the same place.
Wow, it's fun. It's fun.
I made it, bro, it was great.
How good is it?
Uh-uh. Uh-uh.
That's a little chilly.
That's a little chilly.
Oh, I don't like this, I hear.
What's he doing?
First of all, you have all these things.
I want to.
There you go.
Just showing them over. Get returned.
Y'all paying taxes or what?
We just have some.
We give returns.
That's why they keep on coming.
Oh, this is true. This is true. They just won't.
Won't go away.
Won't let it go, will it?
I'm so happy that they found a place I could go home and do with Jake.
Up. I was just like the first thing I said, I'm trying to meet you down, do you know what we're going on? I told him, I said, I have three different questions, three different number of cards on. Bar the fact that they still have it co-mingled into my vertical account. It's been like that since I've been. Yeah. Well, he wanted to be in the board.
I'll follow him here.
I need it all. I'll holler.
All right, we'll go ahead and call it a order, tonight's Amherst County Board of Supervisors meeting. Today is April 16th, 2024. The time now is 7:01 PM. With that, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I move.
Motion on floor by Mr. Martin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Next thing we have is the invocation and pledge. Ms. Tucker's gonna lead us in the invocation, and Mr. Adams will lead us in the pledge.
Please stand. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this beautiful weather, we thank you that, that Amherst County has managed to escape some of the storms and severe weather that other parts of our country have seen. Lord, we thank you for our law enforcement, our public safety, our schoolteachers, our staff, and all the people that come here with an open heart and an open mind, willing to serve this county and its constituents. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. We can direct attention to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Next item we have is citizen comment. So we'll invite anyone wishing to speak at this time that would like to address the board, please feel free to come up, just state your name and your district, please. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Adams, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Next we have is new business. First item up is the tax abatement, Mr. Creasy.
Chairman, Board, good to see you all. I would like to make one caveat, but before presenting this, I am no expert on tax abatement or real estate taxes, so any questions you may have, I may not have the answer here, but I will research and get back to you at your next board meeting. But the board directed staff at their March 19th, 2024 meeting to research tax abatement programs in other localities. In your item summary, staff's put together a chart showing similar programs if available, and if so, how long they are. So I'll quickly go through these. Of course, as you're aware, Amherst County, we do have a program in place for tax abatement, and this is for derelict structures, let me clarify. So if you've got a derelict structure, you apply for this program, and you get approved, you rebuild the structure, and from my understanding, you are assessed at that tax value from that derelict structure for the next 15 years. And after 15 years, your new assessed value, that's what you'll be taxed on. So Amherst County, right now, we do have that program in place, and it's for 15 years. Town of Amherst does not, I should have known this, they do not pay real estate tax. Appomattox County, they do not have a tax abatement program in place. Bedford County does, is the code section down there, and it's for 15 years. Campbell County does not, and the city of Lynchburg does. It's called a tax exemption rehabilitated slash renovated structures. And the length of their program is 50% of the fair market value of the replacement portion slash structure only for 10 years, and it steps down 25% for the last three years. So on the fourth year, you'll be at 100% of the new reassessment. And I do have a caveat in here, in my, in looking through the code, there was a code section that indicated 15 years, but after speaking to their director of real estate, I do not believe that is the case, and that they use that 50% of fair market value for 10 years stepping down, 25%. Staff does not have a recommended motion. We wanted to bring this to you, and we are definitely more than happy to reach outside of just our general adjoining localities, because of course, as you see, we only have, there's only three localities that have this program in place, so staff is more than happy to research all other localities who have these programs in place that are similar to Amherst and bring that information back to you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Yeah, I do. I know that Nelson County is not in the same planning district that we are, but to me, it would make sense that we include Nelson when we look at stuff like this.
Yes, ma'am. Will do.
I'd like to, going forward, I'd like to do that. And the other thing, I just want to point a clarification in case somebody would ask, while the town residents in the town don't pay town taxes, they do pay county taxes.
Yes, ma'am, they do.
They're not getting off scot-free.
That's correct. That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Martin.
Yes, sir, thank you. So, Mr. Creasy, define derelict.
Derelict would, I want to say we have a definition within our code, that I cannot read verbatim right now, but from my understanding in the two, do you have it?
All right, I can read it. A derelict building means any building that may endanger the public health, safety, welfare, and for a continuous period of at least six months, has been number one vacant, or number two boarded up in accordance with the building code or under an order to do so, and three, not lawfully connected to electric service from a utility service provider, or not lawfully connected to any required water or sewer service from a utility service provider.
Okay, so pretty much condemned to no utilities for six months. Okay. I think we should check state code, because I think state code says 12, but anyway. So we have a program, is it being used?
So far, we've had three apply. I believe two have been completed, and one is under completion. If you remember, back in the fall, you all heard a special exception in the, in Old Town Madison Heights, they, that was part, they went into this program in which they turned a single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling with the outward appearance of a single family. He applied and was approved through this tax abatement, but I do not believe that property's been issued a CO yet.
And if you will, this code was just adopted in 2018, so it's been in place for about six years.
So three in six years. How many derelict structures do we have in the county?
We don't have a rough number of that, we don't have a counter, but I would say it's a hefty amount, I would say.
The entire purpose of having a program like this is to encourage people to rehabilitate these structures. So, ma'am, who asked to put?
I did.
Okay, so are we looking to encourage that, or are we looking to decrease it because it's not working? I mean, what was your thoughts, Mr. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, good. So, so the main purpose, Mr. Martin, for me to bring it up is as after, after hearing about and evaluating, and I think one of the items, or one of the structures that came up was the one that Mr. Creasy was just speaking about on the south end, in Mr. Wade's district. I very much, and as I brought this thing up to Mr. Bright, I very much want to still encourage that type of program, right? Very much so. However, I just think after talking to some, because I tried to do some homework before we went too far into this, because I didn't want to stay up to waste a lot of time on this, but doing a little homework of my own, speaking to some real estate folks that I trust, everybody along with myself feels that the 15 years is extreme, that after speaking to them that have developed or is aware of this program in other areas that are outside of this planning district, as Mr. Tucker brought up, seven to 10 years is typically the average on something like this. So, again, I'm just trying to find a balance with, they're just giving away the farm for 15 years, so.
I would agree that 15 years is probably a little long. What, what concerns me is nobody's really using it at 15. I mean, is it publicized?
We have it on our website, I know that Nate Young, our building official, when he runs into these situations, we've talked about this a lot, he's advocating himself, and it's on our website, however, and I believe we've done a press release or two, so we could continue to, you know, push that out more. And we created an application, so we have an application that goes along with, I'm sorry, explains the program. So when they apply, the program's explained how it works and how the rules are laid out.
I don't want to open a big can of worms, but, so if a building gets condemned and it becomes derelict, put a sticker on it and it stays that way?
Condemned? You mean if they want to do this program?
No, 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 just in general. Condemned, becomes derelict, it just stays that way, we're not?
Well, the building inspector, as you know, will work to make sure it's in compliance, right? So it's boarded up properly, it's safe, but yes.
If it becomes a nuisance, then we would consider demolishing it like we did the...
I have a question. How does that work? If it's been condemned and a person comes in here and says, I want to buy it, and I'm gonna bring it up to, you know, make it look nice, and they tear it down, and they put a modular home there, do they still get the tax break?
No, ma'am.
You've got to work within the footprint and something, how much that house has got to be left?
They would apply for the program upfront, and so the commission revenue has to agree, the zoning administrator and the building official on, on, on the plan, so a plan has to get submitted. This code requires them to submit a plan that all three officials have to agree on.
Mr. Chairman, so let me make sure, so going back to what Ms. Tucker just asked, I was under the impression that when they apply for this, when they, when they go through this process, I thought it was attached to the address, correct?
It's attached to that dwelling, yes. Correct.
So, other than addressing the concerns that Ms. Tucker has, what, what is our process, once that's initiated, to keep them from doing what she just asked?
Well, they will, they will apply through us, and it, right, so we have an application. Commission revenue is involved, zoning administrator, building official. They go through the application process, it gets attached through the building permit process. Does that make sense?
It does, but I still think, from what I understand with the, with the ordinance, I guess, it's attached to this, I think it's some Swiss cheese effect associated to it, that some things could slip through the cracks, to where someone could acquire a piece of this property and go through this process and be able to turn it over for significant profit with it, and with the tax abatement for 15 years, and basically, our hands are tied at that point in time.
Yeah, and I would, and I, I understand, I think I hear you. I would, we've only done a few, the, the one on, is it Lynch's Ferry? Lynch's Ferry Road, I don't know if you've seen that one.
Yeah, I have.
It's a gorgeous house, but they've done, they took a house that has had a lot of problems. You know, I think where we're seeing this happen is in areas that we want to see reinvestment.
Right.
And so we've, this has been a good program, hasn't been wildly used, but the few that have come through have been successful, and they've turned around, they've invested in areas that no one's investing in hardly.
Sure.
Very, very few people are investing. So I'm a big proponent of this program, I think we're doing a good job with it. Staff, you know, with, if you go 10 years or 15 years, I don't think we feel real strong, I think both will still make it a strong program, so, you know, at your pleasure, if you'd like to reduce it. I don't see that negatively, grossly negatively affecting it. I can tell you, that house on Lynch's Ferry has, was a major transformation, it was, I think, a really big win.
If, if I may, just a few things to a couple of points. You know, really, you're starting to kind of see Amherst County now have a little bit of revitalization in Madison Heights, and it's kind of just started over the past, I would say, year and a half, two years. And so with the city of Lynchburg, when speaking to their commissioner of the real estate, they, their kind of gentrification, I know that word is bad in some areas, but that kind of started in the, what, late 2000s, 2010s, and so since that started, they've now started seeing a bunch of those projects come through over the past 10 years, from my understanding, since that. So I believe, as the county continues to revitalize and grow, I believe over the next five to 10 years, now this is just my assumption, but you would start seeing more of these applications, as you start seeing more development come across the river.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just a point, just so, as part of the discussion, Section 152907.1 of the Code of Virginia does say that the tax abatement cannot be less than 15 years.
So how is the city doing 10?
Cities are under a different guise, they have a charter, they can do a heck of a lot more than what counties can do.
Okay, well, I guess it's a moot point then.
Unfortunately, that's the way it works.
Well, I would, I would also offer, Mr. Chairman, that since 2018, we've had three, all right, and it sounds like we've had three successes. I get your point, Mr. Adams, but it's not like, I mean, I wouldn't even say it's been, been abused. I mean, they're taking these structures, they're investing money into it, they're saving these structures, they're bringing them back, they're rehabilitating them, they're bringing them into, to use. You know, that's something that philosophically, I would think we'd want to promote, right? So, but it sounds like it is a moot point, because it's 15 years, and I, I wouldn't really get, get rid of the program right now, so it's a good discussion, yep.
I think if anything, I'd like to see it encouraged more, so I don't know if Mr. Young can, I don't know if he, does he hand out the applications now?
We do, we do, and we can also, we can, we can do more press releases, so that's something we can, we can, I'll add to the list now.
Any other discussion?
I would just make the point that I think Mr. Adams was making is, maybe we do need to take a look at it and make sure that it's not being used incorrectly, just to make sure we've got everything appropriate, so it's not being abused.
All right, thank you. Next item we have is discussion on private roads. Mr. Creasy.
Mr. Chairman. The staff was asked by the board to explore options to potentially bring private roads into the state system and/or help with the maintenance. So staff got in contact with VDOT, and according to them, the going rate to bring a private road up to state standards is generally, generally $300,000 per mile. That is assuming the right-of-way is large enough, and that there are no stormwater structures or other major work needed to happen in order to bring that road into the system. It's also important to note that the initial survey work and engineer design, engineering design is not part of that $300,000, so if you had to raise, if, let's say the grade was too steep in an area to raise that up, getting the engineering costs for that, that is not included in that. So based off of that, staff did some research, and we can definitely go back to the table and look, look even further to find other options. But the three options we came up with, the first is a special taxing district. I'm not going to, staff does have recommendations in the item summary, I'm not going to give those at first, but the first is a special taxing district. You would need, state code indicates you would need 50% of the residents within the special district to agree. In staff's research, many localities up that to 75%, so 75% of the residents living on that private road must agree to that special taxing district to bring that road, to incur those costs to bring that road into the state system. Through this special taxing district, 100% of the cost to bring the road into state standards is borne upon the property owners. And in research, typically, this is based on a five, 10, and 20-year taxing cycle. And as you know, Amherst County has hundreds of roads that are private, and so depending on the size, that year could be even pushed out further. The second option is a VDOT revenue share program, which Mr. Robert Brown informed you all of at your last meeting. This happens every two years. VDOT provides a 50/50 match to bring roads up to state standards, and the other match would have to come from the property owners. In the researching of the special taxing district, staff believes that you could make use of that special taxing district to receive that other 50/50 match. And then, to caveat all of that, it's not a guarantee, because VDOT makes that final decision on which roads are approved, so that's also something to keep in mind. And the third option is a public-private partnership. In speaking with residents on Victoria Drive, they indicated the need for financial help to maintain their private road. So this is, this is very, very vague and outward thinking, but the, this partnership would only be for the maintenance of private roads. The board would allocate X amount of funds for this committee, and then the county would then create this committee consisting of several departments. The committee sets parameters for which roads would be eligible to apply, and then the committee sets a cap on how much money can go to each project. The committee reviews projects on a first-come, first-served basis, to help only with the maintenance of private roads in the county. Those are the three options that staff has come up with so far, and of course, we can definitely go back to the drawing board and look for other options, too.
Thank you, sir. Board, any questions?
Well, Mr. Sheriff, if I may, so I requested this because I was contacted by residents on Victoria Drive, and I'm sure they're having the same issues as many neighborhoods around the county are. You know, back when these subdivisions were developed, they were developed with private roads, and the reason they were developed with private roads is so that they could keep the costs down, and that essentially put more return on investment in the developer's pocket. There were supposed to be homeowners' associations, which we all know are more than likely defunct. People do not pay into it, and they're left with roads that aren't maintained, and which causes issues. I believe they actually have some culverts that are near possibility of collapsing, and if those culverts do collapse, you'll have seven homes that will not be able to get in or out, or fire protection to, or medic units to, and what are we going to do when that happens, right? So I did come to county staff and ask them to look for options, and I appreciate you doing that. It seems to me that the revenue sharing is the best possible scenario for, for everyone, yet that does require either the homeowners to start paying their homeowner's dues, or the county is going to have to, would have to step in and do the special taxing district, all right? Because that's the only way you're going to collect these homeowner's dues. Because that's the only way you're going to collect these homeowner's dues, all right? I think it's, I think it's unfortunate, but that's the way it is. And I'm sure we have these all over the county. I'm not a, I live on a private road, I'm not a fan of them. Do we still allow them?
So we do still allow private roads. However, the Amherst plantation, which I'm sure you all are aware about, they're like five-acre lots. So we've changed that code. So now you can still build a private road, but you can only have five lots come off of it, and it's 10 acres or greater. And each lot must be that way, and no, no past five. And we use that for existing. So let's say there's an existing private road with already five lots on it. We wouldn't allow you to subdivide unless it's a family division.
So I guess what I would offer is to go back to the residents and say, look, you know, of course, if the rest of the board agrees, look, you know, we're more than willing to go look at doing this revenue share, but you're going to have to come up with the other 50%. And this is how we can do it. You need to start garnering support from your, your landowners in the area to do it. And if they can't do it, then I don't know what the answer is when that culvert fails.
So I'll, I'll agree with you. I think one thing we also probably need to know in advance before, I mean, is VDOT even willing to consider entering that road since they'll get the final decision on that approach. So it might be worth touching base with VDOT in advance, once you, once you've identified the roads and getting their, their buy-in.
Right, and I, we've got a pretty good line of communication with them. I, I believe we should be able to handle that fairly easily. Yes, sir.
So we're talking about number two, where it's a 50-50 between the
Yes, sir.
And VDOT, yeah, I don't think the county needs to be involved in, yeah, I guess, like you said, a special tax district, if you wanted to do that, but I, I wouldn't really want to do that. I mean, if your driveway fails or something like that, you're responsible as a homeowner to take care of it. So, you know, I understand that, where they're coming from, but it's really their responsibility. You know, we're not here to correct every wrong. And frankly, we don't really have the funds to be able to do that at this point. We're already scratching pennies. But the 50-50 match from VDOT, I mean, that, that's where you would start. And that's 300,000 per mile, and that, that would be without engineering costs and without the right-of-ways. I mean, who knows? It's probably going to be quite a bit more than, than the 300,000 per mile.
There is a, Supervisor Martin makes a great point. Those culverts, they'll have to be brought up to state standards. And so Victoria Drive, even though it's about .8 miles, is probably well over $300,000 to upgrade.
Yeah, I think we had a situation where Madison Heights Elementary School was several years ago. And that was very expensive, you know. It had to be corrected because I think we had a failing culvert, and it was a private road, but our school was back there, so we had to go in and fix that road. And it's, it's expensive, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I just don't agree with this. I don't agree with it. I think it's rewarding irresponsibility. I mean, you buy some property, you have an agreement, and then somebody reneges on it, doesn't do their part, and then it comes to the county and wants us to pay for it. It doesn't sit well with me. But I understand there's a safety issue there. If the fire truck can't get to the house, let's just say it, you know. What are you going to do? So I can be okay with the sharing thing.
But we're not, we're not, but the county, I mean, the county would not be paying for it. The county would be assessing a special tax on them to pay the 50% of their portion. So that means, otherwise, it wouldn't be equitable to every other private road in the county.
Do we have to continue having, do we have to continue having private roads?
That's
Well, and let me further what Mr. Creasy said. It's a good point. It's been a good ordinance, the five lot on, and only with 10 acres. So what we're dealing with now, like Victoria, for example, could not happen again. So our ordinance does not allow that. But there are situations where private roads have been beneficial. And because it's so land consumptive, the way the ordinance is written, I don't think it's abused now. We're dealing with problems from the past. That's what this is.
But let me, Mr. Chairman, if I may, even though our ordinance now is more restrictive for private roads, correct? The perpetual care, though, right? We could still run it, or say we, they, the homeowners on these, in this private development, could face issues down the road with perpetual care, even though we've made it more restrictive. So have we done anything in the ordinance to prevent that from happening?
So what we have done, and I tell you, staff enforces it now. We haven't had any issues in my five years of being here and approving subdivision plots, but we do require a road maintenance agreement to be signed and recorded by all property owners and be recorded in the courthouse, and we keep a copy for our records. Since, so we require that, and it indicates what lots are affected by, indicating the tax numbers, because typically, they won't have addresses. And so therefore, that will be attached with your deed. So if you're going to buy a piece of property, and if you're doing your due diligence for your title search, it should come up indicating, hey, there's a road maintenance agreement here. And we've seen them done different ways. We have a boilerplate agreement people can use. But if somebody wants to use a county attorney, we just make sure that it's talking about the meat of it, of what we need for the perpetual maintenance, then we typically sign off on that.
The issue is, is it's not enforceable by the county.
Right, it's a civil issue. Yes, sir.
It's a civil issue? Clearly a civil issue. And what you end up with is either A, people just don't pay, or B, they own the land and they don't live around here, so they're not concerned with it. And you're left with roads that aren't maintained. So again, I'm not a fan of private roads. I think that limiting them to certain lengths and lots is a good thing. But I think what you're referring to is even with the new ones
Correct, that, that's my point.
So, but, you know, I think Chief Bean could probably attest to this. You know, like Victoria Drive, the landowners are, or, you know, they bought it when they were young. It didn't matter. Now they're getting more elderly, and we have a lot of call, you know, EMS, whatever. No, it's not our fault, but
I mean, you know, there's a thousand circumstances like that that we could address, you know, not just roads. So I don't know, I, I feel like that it's, it's a priority of the property owners and the subdivision or what have you. It's not our problem per se. Yeah, it could be, sure, but it could happen in many other circumstances as well, so.
So I, I would, I would support the number two. Because that way, it, it, it makes the neighborhood have skin in the game.
Yeah.
Right? And if, if the state would, you know, if, if it met their program and they could do the other 50, great. But I do believe that the, the property owners need to have skin in the game.
So I don't want to drag this out, but just for me to understand this, under the, I agree with Mr. Martin. If I've got to select one, number two is going to be the option I think we need to go with. This whole thing's a slippery slope, as far as I'm concerned. But educate me on the revenue sharing. So if it's, if, if VDOT puts in 50%, and the 50% is responsible from the, from the landowners, from the property owners, do they have to have their 50% acquired before VDOT will initiate their 50% and move forward?
Yes, and I believe that would, that would be a decision for the board to make, if they would want to put that money up front and then special tax them over the X amount of years to recoup that money, or require those property owners to put that money up front at the beginning in order to do that project.
That was my second question. If they weren't able to do it, then are they going to come looking for us to front the money?
I'd say, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I think the only way to make it work is, you're, you're kind of creating this program, is the county would have to upfront the, the cost and then recoup it over a certain number of years, right? And, you know, once it's recouped and it's in the state system, then that special taxing district goes away. Then if there's another road, right, that program could work for, you would just move it to another road. It's not a quick fix at all. But, you know, I understand that, you know, people bought on the private roads and this and that. But, you know, if we have citizens get trapped and can't get to their house, we're going to be hearing about it. And I guarantee you, all seven of, all five of us are going to be sitting up here trying to figure out what to do about. So I'd rather be more proactive than reactive on it, so.
I don't think any of us will argue that point, but this could be a very, this, as many private roads as we have, this could be a very, very expensive endeavor. Yeah, I mean, it takes the responsibility away from the property owners. I mean, you know, we, we do live in America still. I think it, it's your own free will to choose where you live and the places you live. If you live up 60 West, or you live far away from a fire rescue, you're going to be, get slower service time. So I, I don't agree necessarily with Mr. Martin on that issue. I think it's a slippery slope, and we'd be looking at Amherst Plantation and every other private subdivision in the county.
And the other thing is, I mean, I don't know how long they've, we would keep this particular special tax block on these properties. Would it take 10, 15, 20 years to pay it back? And so then we've got that money, we've already, we have given it to these, to this issue. And then what do we do with other things that we need to take advantage of that benefit the entire county? I don't like it.
I, I, man, it just, this is a tough spot, because public safety, obviously, I'm with you, 110%. I, I get concerned about that. But then you play into this thing even deeper. Let's hypothetically say that we, we've got a short street with seven families on it that are already on restricted incomes, and we're going to impose a special taxing district on them to where they're going to have to pay more taxes, where they're already struggling to pay what's, they're already looking at. You know, how do we?
They lose their homes?
How do we handle that?
Well, if those seven homes are behind this culvert that's going to collapse, what are they going to do then? Are we just going to stick our heads in the sand and say?
Well, they're going to have to figure out how to come up with some money to replace the culvert.
Well, and
I mean, that's what you have to do.
I think what we're
What do you do when you need a new roof? I mean, you know, you're going to have to figure it out.
So I think the, the question is, is okay, is it local government's place to help in these situations like this? Or do we just throw our hands up and say, oh, you created this mess, we're out, right? You know, all, all, we would be recouping the county funds, right? I mean, they are citizens, and they do pay real estate taxes. But they're not, I mean, a lot of the property owners in that subdivision aren't being very, I don't know what word to use, responsible in paying their association road maintenance fees over the years, right? It's a, it's a, I mean, one, we allowed it to happen many years ago, right? And now we're dealing with the consequences of it. So I'm not sure what the answer is, if the board doesn't want to look at it.
I think there might be, well, I don't know, I would challenge staff to look into develop, developing a policy so we don't wind up with multiple roads at the same time.
Well, yeah.
Whatever, whatever it might be. But I think there's opportunity here.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any way we could do multiple I mean, I don't think VDOT has the revenue sharing to do multiple at once, but
I think we need policy to state, state that as well.
So are you saying that we look at all these roads where we know that we've got a problem and just start prioritizing and say, okay, we'll do five a year or whatever?
I'm not saying do them five a year. I'm, I'm saying you might do one every 15 years or every five years, however long it takes to recoup it. And I mean, I think, to me, the owners, the neighborhoods would come to us, we wouldn't go to them.
And, and if I could add on to that, I, I believe if we chose to go that route, we would kind of create like a flyer or something along those lines that we are looking to pursue this program for private property owners, but they would have to come to us. Because it's important to note, we would need to set a stipulation for how many residents on that road need to, need to agree. I believe state code indicates at least 50%, but most localities go up to 75% of the residents on that road having to agree to that special taxing district.
Well, it might moot the word of the day, I think. It might be a moot point, because I doubt you're going to get 50 to agree. And then we will just be throwing our hands
We're done then.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing
We tried, gave an option.
Tried, gave you an option, there's nothing we can do, so.
What number do you think you'd be interested in, 50, 75?
I'm, I'm okay with 50, to tell you the truth.
I don't know, I just think number two is the only option that I would support, the VDOT option. I don't support the special taxing.
Well, it
Yeah, but it's not a guarantee, I mean, you
You could make use of the special taxing district for the revenue share, or you could just do the revenue share without special taxing. But that would involve the property owners on that road to have all of those funds upfront to apply that year with VDOT, if you wouldn't, if you didn't make use of that special taxing district.
Why don't you, just a suggestion, why don't you call the Victoria Drive homeowners back and say, look, you know, do you think you could get the 50%?
I mean, they'd be better off just putting their resources to fixing the problem as opposed to creating a special tax district.
I agree with what Mr. Martin says, just call them, see what they say. If they're like, oh, no, no, we don't want to pay any money, we want you to do it, then you know what your answer is. What's the matter?
Right here, I had us.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
We can, staff can definitely reach back out to those property owners, kind of gauge a feeling, come back to you all.
All right, thank you. Board, any other comments, questions? All right, moving on, rules and procedures. Mr. Creasy.
Yes, so staff was recently approached through the Route 29 Business Beautification Committee. We, that committee has a mini-grant program in place to where businesses are liable to apply, to do facade upgrades, landscaping, anything to really beautify the corridor. And we were recently approached by a store owner that would like to make use of the county logo in a mural. And after, I brought this to, to Mr. Bryant, and after consultation with the county attorney, they believed that we should have a policy in place for people to use, or citizens, nonprofits, businesses, anybody to use our county seal and logo. Now, what I would like to make reference is that the document in which this policy is in is called Amherst County Board of Supervisors Rules and Procedures. I completely understand if you do not want this policy in here, and that is my fault for adding it in here. So what I would ask, if you are okay with the policy, it should be the last two pages on that document, section five, use of county seal and logo. If you're okay with what is written, and if you so choose, staff could take this out and just create a separate document calling it use of county seal or logo and do it that way. And that is, that is it. Are there any questions for staff?
Board, questions? Mr. Martin.
Is the seal and logo copyrighted?
That was one of the questions I was going to ask you. I am not aware at this moment in time whether or not it is either service-marked either in Virginia or through the U.S. Patent Trade Office. If that is something that you are interested in doing, I most certainly can do that for you. It's not a complicated process, and then you would have those, the protections afforded by law.
I think that would be the first step, because otherwise, there's no prohibition on people using it, right? So I, I would say that's the first step, and I would agree with you, it shouldn't be in our rules and procedures.
I mean, my, my question is, we, we've had this, how long have we had this seal?
2017, I believe, is when we had the, well, the seal is much older. The, the new branding is from 2017. The seal was created many years
You're talking about using what?
Both.
Both.
It's for both.
Having a policy for both. Yes, sir.
Do we need to have a, I mean, I, I don't know what's the big, why have a trademark? Why not just let them use it? I mean, well
I'll tell you, if I can give you one example, there, there's some groups that are using our seal, and a lot of people think that it's the county that's on social media using our seal. And we get calls about, hey, why, hey, county, why did you post this, post on something, which we didn't? And so it's being used in a manner that is confusing to folks, whether or not it's official county business or not.
All right, so if someone uses it, what, what do we do if it's trademarked? We go after them and sue them? And we, we tie up all those resources in court to sue them?
Cease and desist.
I mean, cease and desist, I mean, that's what I wanna.
Yeah, initially, there's a cease and desist letter that goes out. Normally, uh, you know, you'll get reaction and they'll stop using it. It's a very rare situation where they continue to use it even though you have requested, they discontinue it. And then obviously, at that point, it's a determination as to whether or not you legally wanna go after them or not. You don't have to if you don't want to.
I mean, I, I just don't see it's wasting resources unless it was, I mean, unless it, it was something different than what our seal is and it was, and then, but I, I don't know. I, I'll let you all figure that out. I just don't see the point in going through all this. I mean, people are gonna use it and then you can write a cease and desist letter and we'll have you writing a hundred of them, who knows? And then the next thing you know, we're gonna spend money going to court to defend it and, and going through this whole gamut. So that's kind of the two, two options.
Or you could just let them paint it on the mural and say, have at it. Represent the county any way you want to, right?
We can do that too.
Which brings its own set of concerns.
Well, the seal belongs to the citizens. It does. It's like everything else, belongs to them.
Okay, so can they represent it any way they want to?
Probably. What about free speech?
I don't know. I haven't, I haven't received any complaints, but, or anyone using it in a negative way that I'm aware of, maybe, uh, are they using the old one?
They're using the seal.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
The old seal?
Well, that one right there, seal, not, not the, not our new branding logo, county seal.
Okay. I don't know. I, I just, I think we're opening a can of worms. I mean, if, if someone's coming to you to, to do it, I mean, I suppose they would depict it the way that it looks.
Aren't most locality seals and logos trademarked?
A lot of them have, have been, mainly because of social media and the confusion that is out there in the public, because things get posted with a logo or a seal, and then the public assumes that's the official county position. And that just causes additional headaches and time, labor and effort trying to correct that misunderstanding.
Yeah, I mean, I see that. I mean, that's a valid point.
Yeah, I would support it for that reason, so.
Did I understand the reason this got brought up is because we have a business that's currently using or is asked to use it?
They, they asked us to use it and we didn't have a policy in place.
Okay. Who, is it okay to ask who that, who that was?
The Anderson's Country Market.
Okay.
So they, they're gonna use it as their logo?
They're gonna be painting, they applied for a mini grant to paint one facade of, I believe, as you're going south on 29 Business, they've got a wall that's open.
Just to represent the county, not, not as a logo for the actual business.
Correct, just as a representation. I believe there's a, also, they've gotten copyright approval from Queen Estovall to use one of her paintings within the mural, so they're trying to incorporate, I guess, Amherst County.
They're trying to do something that establishes a sense of community. They're trying to be loyal to where they are.
Yes, ma'am, I would.
Trying to do everything that we've asked them to do in that revitalization thing.
I'm with you, Ms. Tucker. I, I agree with it in that light. I just, I, I don't wanna talk out of both sides of my mouth. This, something like that should make us proud, right?
Yeah.
I just don't want to get into a situation where we, we see it posted on social media that may be attached to something that none of us would be proud of. That's the only thing we're concerned about.
Which is why we, that's why we brought this up.
Yeah. Yeah. So that, that's, I, I don't know how, and I, I'm, obviously, that, somebody a lot smarter than me needs to figure that out, but that's what concerns me.
I think what's been proposed, I mean, it figures it out, right?
Yeah, this.
Because nobody would tell Anderson's Country Market, I wouldn't think we would say, no, you can't use the, the A logo on your mural. I mean, that's something that's really cool, right? But it does protect the county from other things if, if we had these, a policy in place and a trademark on it. So the unfortunate reality is that it should be done and I would support doing that, so.
I'll, I'll, I have to second that. I'm all in favor for this as it offers protection for the county. You know, it's great that the market reached out in advance and just throwing it up, so kudos to them. But I, I think it's something we'll need as, you know, social media is everywhere nowadays. Who knows what other kind of organizations might wanna use it? So I'm, I'm in favor of it.
So I, then I will go ahead and begin the application process. As soon as that application is completed, then we can bring the policy back in its independent form and have you all officially act on it at that time, if that's acceptable.
Well, was there consensus on that?
Do we, do we need to make a motion for this? Mr., Mr. Bryant?
If you're asking Mr. Popovich to go that far, I think I would do a motion for that, but then we can bring the policy back to you once he's.
I would make a motion that we ask county attorney to register or copyright the county seal and the county logo and direct staff to establish a policy separate from our rules and procedures for its use.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So, all right, there you have it.
The American flag trademark?
Next item we have is the county attorney's report.
I have nothing at this time, Mr., Mr. Chairman.
Well, no, it ain't a big deal, but.
All right, thank you, sir. Moving on to committee reports, Parks and Rec, Mr. Martin?
Let's talk about something happy. Parks and Recreation, Seminole Park is, uh, you know, a lot of things have been completed there. I believe they've got fencing up. I believe some high school students donated and worked on putting some benches and things in. I believe there's going to be a grand opening in June, maybe?
We don't have a date yet, but June.
Yeah, so kudos to our Parks and Rec staff and everyone that's worked really hard on that. Parks and Recreation also has a bunch of activities ongoing, everything from soccer to, well, it's not wiffle ball, it's.
Pickleball?
Pickleball. Encourage our citizens to check them out, what activities are available on Parks and Rec. So they're, that board and staff do a wonderful job for the county. Yep.
Thank you, sir. Ag, ag committee, Ms. Tucker?
Yeah, I was at, at last Monday's ag committee meeting. I had a conflict with another meeting, but I understand that we have got another applicant for the last vacancy, and that applicant has sent you the required information, right, Mr. Bryant?
Ma'am.
That's all the news I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item we have is citizen comment. Anybody wishing to address the board at this time, feel free to come up, state your name and your district. Please come up to the mic. Do we have a?
Stephen King. I, I don't even know what district I'm in. I, I've met Mr. Martin over here, but I'd just, uh, represent the Buffalo Ridge. I just wanna make a comment that might give you some clarity when, in your next meeting, when you're discussing this road thing. Here, here's the straight up issue. We cannot, um, we only have $125 a year dues per year. We're just a road maintenance. I don't think when I bought 25 years ago, the COVID ever crossed my mind. I just pay my dues thinking things are taken care of, you know, by doing what I signed in the contract. And like you said, the road's a mile long, so we can't get people to pay their $125. We have, we have an emergency fund we set up about 15 years ago, and the other $25, what that's for, for this type of emergency, well, there's $12,000 in it after that much time. And, and we had no idea there's a COVID, it was going, now they're telling us, well, the first guy told us $120,000 for this COVID. You know, I mean, unless I just pulled it out of my pocket. So we were hoping that maybe something could come up where we could get some help. We've got the price down now, the latest quote, I've got it down to about $55,000, and that's a 100-year warranty, just to fix the thing without having the state take it over. So we were hoping that possibly the county could help us and then we could get everybody to sign an agreement to pay X amount and back five, 10, 50, you know, whatever the deal is, we can work out. But, um, we, we're just kind of in a rock and a hard place here. I'm at the point, I don't know what to, I plan on dying at this place and I don't know whether to sell it, run it, whatever. Uh, it's just frustrating, but thank you for your time and I appreciate anything you can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else wishing to address the board at this time? All right. So you know, we'll move on to matters from members of the board. Mr. Adams?
I have none.
Martin?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Ms. Tucker?
I don't have anything.
I have nothing either. Uh, next we have is closed session. Anybody want to take us into closed session?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and, uh, move that we go into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2 dash 3711, seven, for the limited purpose of consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the county regarding property located in District Three.
All right, motion on the floor to go into closed session by Mr. Adams. All those in favor, say aye?
Uh.
I vote aye as well. We're in closed session.
[inaudible]
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.